Twenty seven, two thousand twenty one, Tuolton City Council meeting to order. Our first of my item of business tonight is our pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Reyes.
Hello, everyone. So put your right hand over your heart. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen. And that's going to be led by Counselor Brooks. Where is Counselor Brooks? Give her a second here. All right, seeing that she's not here, as folks know, COVID is still with us. The Delta variant is claiming many, many victims. So the city council, myself, we all encourage you to continue to wear your masks, get vaccinated, and do everything you can do to stop the spread of this virus. It is deadly, and many of us know folks have passed away from the virus. And let's, let's get this under control so we can get back to normal, if you will, sometime soon. So let's take a moment to remember those folks that we know have been, you know, had their lives cut short. And those of the folks that we don't know, you know, the thousands of those in the United States. So please take a moment. Thank you. Okay, so our first announcement, our only announcement tonight is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have a proclamation that's going to be read by Counselor Sacco, but Chief Steele, you have anything to say in this? Or does any staff have any comments on this proclamation today?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say just a couple of things. I appreciate the time, Members of Council, Bill Steele, Chief of Police. Yeah, so tonight, since nineteen eighty seven, October has been recognized as Domestic Violence Month in our country. Unfortunately, our community is impacted by domestic violence. Often it goes unreported, but it can have devastating consequences for families that can last generations for people and those impacts. So what we need to do is support and assist the survivors of violence and hold those that are responsible accountable for their actions. In fact, even back in two thousand eighteen, the last two homicides that we had in our community were the result of domestic violence between family members. We're very fortunate to have resources available to our community members. In fact, earlier tonight, you allocated funds to help two of our partners, the Family Justice Center and the Domestic Violence Resource Center. So I just want to appreciate you and thank you for highlighting this important issue. I appreciate the support of the nonprofits you did earlier tonight, and I support, I appreciate the support of our police department as well. That allows us to fulfill our mission of providing a safe community. So that is what I had to offer. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sacco.
Thank you, and I'm honored to read this proclamation tonight. This is a proclamation declaring the month of October twenty twenty one as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolton. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, socioeconomic levels, religions, backgrounds, beliefs, and abilities, but often has a disproportionate effect on communities and groups impacted by inequality. And whereas domestic violence includes physical, emotional, social, sexual, spiritual, financial, and digital abuse, and can occur between family members, intimate partners, and within dating relationships. And whereas more than one in three women and one in four men in the United States report having experienced domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, and physical assault by an intimate partner during their lifetimes. And whereas domestic violence impacts vulnerable victims, including children, as approximately fifty percent of Washington County children who are child abuse victims also live in homes with domestic violence. And whereas in twenty twenty, the Family Justice Center served a total of one thousand four hundred and sixty-six survivors of the Domestic Violence Resource Center and the Domestic Violence Resource Center provided twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-six crisis services to survivors despite challenges due to the pandemic. And whereas domestic violence incidents are some of the most complex and dangerous incidents that law enforcement responds to in our community, putting their lives at risk every day in the belief that a coordinated community response is necessary to support survivors, hold offenders accountable, and work towards ending the cycle of violence. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Tuolton designates the month of October twenty twenty one as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent platform to show support for the domestic violence advocates, crisis hotline staff, victim service organizations, the prosecutors who hold offenders accountable, and law enforcement officers in our community. It also provides our community the opportunity to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, resources, hope, and assistance to victims. This is introduced and adopted this twenty-seventh day of September twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Counselor Sacco. I see Judy Wiley has joined the call here on the meeting. I want to give her a moment to speak because she's one of the leaders in the Family Justice Center. And we appreciate what you do for the residents of Tuolton. If you want, let people know what you do. And as Chief Steele said, we continued our support financially at the Family Justice Center. But Judy, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't anticipating to get to say anything tonight, but I love it. Thank you very much, and thank you, Christian, for that, that great proclamation and recognition of what we, we need to deal with in our county and in every city, by the way. It's been a extraordinary experience over the last year and a half. It's been difficult in a lot of ways to determine domestic violence, but we all know, and certainly Chief Steele knows, that there is domestic violence out there in every single city. And our doors have been open, and we, we closed two days to sterilize. And, and that's it. We had staff on, on site. And yes, most of our partners were not in the center due to COVID, but we carried the services. And if we did have people, and women usually, but people coming to the center, and we were able to connect them immediately. I think the biggest message that we lived through the last year and a half is that we provided a safe place. And there are stories out there, and I'd love for us to be able to share those with you, and we will, Mayor, when we come and visit. We have a new executive director, Rachel Schultz, and she's amazing. She's, uh, she's, she's a smart, smart person who has a lot of experience. And we're excited about having her in the center, and I will be introducing her over the next few weeks to all of you. But the, the story is that we had so many people coming, so many victims coming in and needing a place to feel safe. And then they were able to get the services, not in our center during COVID all the time, but they were able to get the services and know where they needed to go next. And our desire is, of course, in the future, to make sure that's all provided in the center, and it will be. It will be. We have some exciting news about new financing for bringing Caris Northwest into the center. We're not sure right now if it's going to be right where we're at, but we are going to have a location that has Caris Northwest, DVRC, and many of our other partners come into the center and be full-fledged indoors, under one roof. And, and it's, it's just good news all the way around. It's, it's been a tough year and a half, but we're, we're moving forward, and it's going to be great. So thank you, thank you, Mayor, and Chief Steele, and the support that we get from Tuolton for our fight against domestic violence. It's a privilege to serve.
Thank you, Judy. All right. So moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone in this Zoom meeting who would like to speak to council, this would be appropriate time. Do we have anyone pre-signed up, Bates?
Yes, no one at the Poll Center, Mayor, but we do have Philip Brown on the Zoom meeting.
All right, welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I'm actually, I apologize, I'm on the agenda for the annexation, so.
All right. Not a problem at all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the meeting who would like to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items considered routine, they'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight's consent agenda only considers, is only two items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty one. And secondly, consideration of resolution number five, five, six, eight, dash, twenty-one, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the replacement of the Wanita Poll Center roof through an interstate cooperative purchase. Would any city council like any of these items removed and heard later tonight? All right, seeing no objections.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All right, so Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also. All right, moving on to a public hearing. Are, we have a public hearing to, for consideration of resolution number five, five, six, nine, dash, twenty-one, adopting findings in support of an exemption from competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to conduct a design-build contract, the Operation Center solar project. I have some required lingo I have to read. Let me go ahead and do that. The city council, sitting as the local contract review board, will now conduct a public hearing on resolution number five, five, six, nine, dash, two, one, to consider adopting findings in support of an exemption from competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to conduct a design-build contract, the Operation Center solar project. O R S two, two, seven, nine, C, dot, three, three, five, and T M C, dash, one, I'm sorry, T, that T M C, one, dash, twenty-one, dash, zero, nine, zero, requires the council to conduct a public hearing and make findings in order to allow an alternative contracting method known as a design-build contracting. Their hearing will begin first with a staff presentation, followed by testimony for any persons who favor this resolution, then followed from testimony for folks who wish to testify against the resolution. After the conclusion of the public hearing, the council will enter deliberations and vote on whether to approve resolution five, five, six, nine, dash, twenty-one. So we'll go ahead and start with a presentation from city staffs.
Good evening, council mayor, council members. Good to see you. It's been a little while. For the record, my name is Clayton Reynolds, Maintenance Services Manager with the city. And what I'd like to do is talk tonight about one of the last components of the Tuolton City Services Operations Center. And that is, as many of you know, there's a requirement, anytime you build a building that's over five million dollars, you need to spend one point five percent of that on green energy. The best way to do that, we believe, is adding to our existing solar system that's on our operations fleet building now. Plan B consultancy, working with the Energy Trust, that's where the ninety-three thousand dollar number comes in, that we need to spend ninety-three thou, ninety-three thousand toward that green, developing that green energy. Now, the reason we're here to ask for exemption to competitive bidding is almost all, well, all solar vendors that we've come in contact with have their own design teams. Therefore, it seems like it makes more sense than us, than us going out and hire a design team to build it than have the potential conflicts that we're going to run into when we go to hire, bid, bid that project out. Makes more sense to do an RFP for a proposal, ask them to design and to install, and ensure that it's going to mesh with our existing system. While it's not the competitive process, I believe, by the way, we're going to set this up in the conditions that we will get the most value at a reasonable cost, the best, best product for the most value. And that is why we're here tonight, and that's what we're asking to do as the last part of that Tuolton City Services project.
All right. Thank you. So now we'll hear from those folks who are in support of the, there's folks at the Poll Center or in the Zoom meeting. We support this resolution. Is anyone there, Bates?
Oh, no.
All right, anyone in the Zoom who would like to testify in support of this resolution? On the flip side, anyone who would like to state their opposition to this resolution? All right, questions for staff, city council? Wow, Clay's, oh, there we go. Counselor Brooks, that's going, Clay's going to get off easy here.
I'm, I'm going to still let him off easy. I, it makes sense to me, so it's not a big question, but I'm just, I didn't really know until the resolution came up about the solar panels, so I'm excited that our city is doing this green part, and I guess I also didn't realize that if you built in the state five million dollars, that you got to have that percentage of green energy, so that's a state. I guess my question is, is it a state regulation, did you say, or in federal?
My, my understanding, it's a state regulation.
Okay.
Are there green, green energy initiative?
And then there's two parts of the solar parts that you want to have mesh. Can you just tell me a little bit more about the two parts of the energy?
Sure, the, one of the issues in, in this process is with the solar system is that each of the companies have their own design team for their types of products and, and meshing them. Versus if we hire a designer that goes out and develops a solar, a system for solar, that's going to become a challenge because not only, then do we have to go out and match, have a contractor be able to build it to those certain specifications, I could just see change orders coming out of our ears. And then the other side of that coin, too, is we have an existing system today, and we built it designed to expand it. So we want to make sure that these design teams or solar companies will be able to design that to fit with our existing system. That's what I was talking about when I was talking about meshing together, make sure they fit, they work together.
I see. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for Clay? All right, with no further questions, we'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and close the hearing, and we can enter into deliberations. Any deliberations, any discussion? Or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number five, five, six, eight, two, one, to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for the replacement of the Wanita Poll Center roof. No. Sorry, five, five, six, nine, two, one, adopting findings in support of an exemption for competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to conduct a design-build contract for the Operation Center solar project.
All right, terrific. The right one.
My copy has this on the consent agenda, so I didn't know why that got moved.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and second to approve resolution number five, five, six, nine, dash, twenty-one, adopting fines in support of exemption from competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to conduct a design-build contract for the Operation Center solar project. Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also. It is adopted unanimously. All right.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Clay. All right, so we have another public hearing, this one quasi-judicial, consider, for consideration of ordinance number one, four, two, zero, dash, twenty-one, annexing approximately four point zero seven acres of property located at two, two, one, one, zero, zero, southwest one hundred twentieth Avenue, tax ID two S one, two, seven, C, zero, 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 four, zero, one, annexing the territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services and withdrawing the territory from Washington County and Hennett Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Roads Maintenance District. This is file number A N N twenty-one, dash, zero, 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 one. Since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, again, I have some required verbiage to read. The council will now consider a petition for annexation brought by the property owners of the territory located at two, one, one, zero, zero, southwest one hundred twentieth Avenue, tax map two S one, two, seven, C, zero, 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 four, zero, one, to annex into the city of Tuolton, annexing the territory to the boundary of Clean Water Services and withdrawing the territory from the Washington County and Hennett Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Roads Maintenance District. This is annexation number twenty-one, dash, zero, 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 one. The state legislature requires the following information to be read. One, the criteria for approval of a proposed annexation are contained in T D C thirty-three, dot, zero, and zero, and include, A, the territory to be annexed is within the retro urban growth boundary, B, the owners of the territory to be annexed, a petition to be annexed, C, the application is consistent with applicable provisions of O R S chapter two, 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 D, the property is contiguous to the city or separated from it only by a public right-of-way or stream, O R S two, 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 E, the annexation is consistent with directly applicable criteria for boundary changes in Metro Code three, dot, zero, nine, including an urban service provider agreement or annexation plan adopted under O R S one, nine, five, dash, zero, six, five, and urban planning or other agreement other than those under O R S one, nine, five, dash, zero, six, five, between the affected entity and a necessary party, a comprehensive plan, a public facility plan, a regional framework plan, a functional plan. The annexation will promote or not interfere with timely, orderly, and economic provisions of the public facilities and services. The applicable, the applicable criteria for the annexation is consistent with state and local law. That's a long one. Number two, testimony and evidence presented must be directed toward the above criteria of those criteria in the Tuolton Development Code or other laws which you believe apply to this decision. Prior to the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The council must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to date certain or leaving the record open for an additional seven days to allow additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony to be presented. Number four, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Number five, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. Item number six, the hearing will begin with the city staff report, followed by testimony from the applicant. The council will then hear testimony from any person in favor of the application, followed by any person opposing the application. The applicant will then be allowed to provide rebuttal testimony and argument. Once all testimony and argument has concluded, the council will close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and deliberate, deliberate towards a decision. Item number seven, if any council members wish to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, they should do so now. Not seeing anybody's hands up, so okay. So right now, that's leads up to the first step of the hearing, which is a presentation by city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Erin Engman. I'm the Associate Planner with the city. Bear with me while I fire up my presentation and share my screen. I'm just going to rearrange some things so I can see my, my notes. As discussed, tonight we are presenting on an application annexation or A N N twenty-one, dash, zero, 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 one, and consideration of ordinance number one, four, six, zero, dash, twenty-one. The purpose of this quasi-judicial hearing is to consider an annexation request for property located at two, one, one, zero, zero, southwest one hundred twentieth Avenue. So our subject property is located south of Tuolton Sherwood Road at the intersection of southwest one hundred twentieth Avenue and southwest Edel Street, as shown in this bright yellow overlay. The property owner, Ashwick Construction Incorporated, represented by Dell Engineering, requests approval to annex approximately four acres of land into the boundary of both Tuolton and Clean Water Services while withdrawing the land from Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and the Urban Roads Maintenance District. No development is proposed as part of this application and distribution. And upon annexation, the land will be zoned manufacturing business park as designated in the Southwest Concept Plan and Tuolton Comprehensive Plan Map ten, dash, one. Before granting the proposed annexation, the city council must find that the annexation conforms to the applicable criteria listed on this slide. Additionally, staff has included an analysis and findings as exhibit three, which has found that all the annexation, or, excuse me, which has found that the annexation meets all applicable criteria. In conclusion, staff finds that the annexation meets the applicable criteria and recommends adoption of ordinance number one, four, six, zero, dash, two, one. An approval of the annexation ordinance will result in the following outcomes. Annexation of the property into the city of Tuolton, designation of the property as manufacturing business park zone, and then concurrent annexation into Clean Water Services. And there are some alternatives that the, excuse me, there are alternatives to the staff recommendation that city council can cite, and that could be continuation of the hearing to a date certain or denial of the annexation request. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions or discussion for staff.
All right, so any questions for Erin at this point? Okay, so I'll go ahead and have the applicant come, come onto the Zoom meeting and support their application.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, I'm Philip Brown, and I apologize, I don't know what's going on with my video. So I apologize. I apologize for that. Um, hey, thank you very much to staff and the council. We've talked, we're trying to help the Davises who own this piece of property. We've been working with them for about two years to try to figure out exactly what to do with this parcel. We've worked with staff from the city of Tuolton, and we kind of got caught a little bit in trying to determine who was the best to try to develop this piece of property with. Was it the city of Tuolton or Washington County? Ultimately, it was decided that Washington County wanted this. I, I think the term I really heard was, this is kind of a remnant piece that needed to be put into the city of Tuolton, so Washington County came back and asked us to work on the annexation of the site. So we have Michael Perkins, who's here with me tonight from Majestic Realty. And then Mike Tell's with us, who is with. And then Mike tells with us who's with Dow Engineering. Uh, I can answer any generic questions. Um. Dow is the engineering firm. They can answer any specific questions you have. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Alright. Any questions for Mr. Brown at this point? Alright. So I'll go on the next phase of this where uh. Testimony for those folks who are uh, supporting. This application and very supportive of the application and supportive of the annexation. If anybody would like to testify in support of the annexation. Right? Do I have anybody who would like to testify in opposition? Of this annexation to the city? Alright, so at this point, uh, any questions for the applicant or city staffs? Council Brooks.
I only had, I had one question. There was um, on the material that was checked around um. Sensitivity review, and I was just curious what that meant. And if the area. Has, what what does that mean?
So I heard that the question entails a sensitivity review. Um, is that correct?
Yeah, and the materials, I don't remember the exact language, but. It was um, checked that the property has a. Sensitivity analysis be done, and I was just curious. About. The. Nature of that.
So. I'm not sure if I'm aware of a sensitivity analysis. Let me um. Jump into the analysis and findings and see if I I might find something that corresponds with that. Um, but generally speaking, um, when we do receive a future development application. We will coordinate with our partner agency Clean Water Services, and they do an assessment of. Wetlands or natural resources on the site. And will um, ask the applicant to mitigate those resources appropriately, so. I don't know if that kind of falls um, under maybe your question or. Um, if it if I'd be a different question, but let me see if I can maybe follow along and see what we might be addressing.
Yeah, and Erin, just to kind of. Tag on to that, and and maybe this is uh, not the same thing you're you're thinking of. Uh, Council Brooks, but um. Yeah, as part of this, we we went through a a clean water services uh, service provider letter process or currently in the process of that. Which, as Erin noted, we would submit with any future development plans. But that looks at any sensitive areas, whether that's wetlands or wetland buffer uh, on or adjacent to the site. Um, and that analysis then goes through Clean Water Services, and if they determine that there's. Uh, wetlands or buffers on site, then we go through kind of a process to kind of identify what that um. You know, how to protect those adequately and or mitigate for them.
I think for this one is it is, I think it's adjacent from what I remember. I'm not sure. Um, I read a little while ago, but um. It it's not wetlands itself, is it? It's. I think it's wetlands adjacent.
Correct. I believe there are some some wetlands to the west of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff or the app? Alright. Going once, twice. Alright, with that, I guess we'll close the hearing and we'll get into deliberations. Any comments? Questions? Motions? Council Hillier.
I'd like to um, ask what specific sorts of businesses are allowed in that manufacturing business park zone? Please.
It's a great question. Let me just pull up the development code real quickly, so. I can refresh my memory. So um, as the name would imply, it is geared towards more manufacturing. Or industrial type uses. Um, some of those uses are limited or by condition. Um. But the uh, purpose of the zone is for the development and protection of modern large scale specialized manufacturing. Or research type facilities. And I can go into more detail if you'd like. Okay.
No, I, thank you.
Alright. So any other further deliberation, any motions? It went so quiet.
I'll make a motion for um, first reading by title only. For ordinance fourteen. Sixty dash twenty one. Double check my number. Yes, fourteen sixty dash twenty one annexing approximately approximately four acres of property. Located on southwest hundred twentieth Avenue.
Alright.
Second.
It's a tie between Counselors Pratt and Sacco.
Council Sacco can have it.
Alright, so I've moved to the second for title only. Uh, reading of top by title only of ordinance number one four six zero dash twenty one. Any discussion of those motions? Alright, Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Uh, Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also it's unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number fourteen sixty dash twenty one and ordinance annexing territory at two one one zero zero southwest one twentieth Avenue tax map two S one two seven C. Lot four oh one into the city of Twelton. Withdrawn the territory from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Roads Maintenance District. And annexing territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services. A N N two one dash zero 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 one.
To have a motion for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion to second for second reading by totally own by title only of ordinance number one four six zero dash twenty one. Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yeah.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And I vote I also it's unanimous. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number fourteen sixty dash twenty one and ordinance annexing territory at two one one zero zero southwest one hundred and twentieth Avenue. Tax map two S one two seven C lot four oh one into the city of Twelton. Withdrawn the territory from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Roads Maintenance District. And annexing territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services A N N two one dash zero 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 one.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt um. Ordinance fourteen sixty dash twenty one.
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt ordinance number one four six zero dash twenty one. Any discussions on those motions? Alright, Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Right.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Bye.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also it's unanimous. The ordinance is passed. Alright, moving on to general business. Uh, item number one. Is consideration of ordinance number one four six one dash twenty one. Relating to landlord tenant. Extend the sixty day protection period in S B two seven eight twenty twenty one to ninety days. Create new provisions in Twelton Municipal Code Chapter nine dash twelve and declaring an emergency. Is uh, and this is where Don gets to talk finally tonight. Is there any staff presentation on this, or am I talking about this?
No, Mr. Mayor, there is a staff presentation this evening. Uh, your esteemed city attorney Sean Brady will give a brief uh, staff presentation for you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Brady.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Acting City Manager. Um. So tonight, uh, on the agenda is the ordinance, and what this does is uh, similar to what Multnomah County had done back in July and Washington County just recently passed. Uh, this extends. The provisions in uh, the uh, the eviction protections in Senate Bill two seventy eight. Uh, extends those from sixty days, which the bill adopted, and it extends this to ninety days. Um, a copy of the Senate Bill is in the packet. But in relevant part, the Senate Bill requires landlords and courts to provide a delay in evictions for non-payment of rent. If the tenant has already uh, applied for rental assistance and provides that documentation to the landlord or the court. Um. And again, this ordinance is virtually identical to what is in state law. And again, just extends that protection period an additional thirty days. The ordinance as proposed is um. Uh, contains an emergency clause, so what that means is if if the council adopts that tonight with the emergency clause. The the vote must be unanimous to adopt that, and it would go into effect on October first uh, of this year.
Alright, thank you, Sean. People have asked me why the the Washington County would not apply to us. Uh, per Washington County's legal counsel. Their resolution or ordinance only applied to unincorporate Washington County. So each city, if they would like to have this extension granted. To residents, their city would have to pass a similar type of ordinance. The process right now is taking about sixty five days for community action. To get through an application and get it submitted and get payment uh, sent out to the landlord. Um, so obviously, they can't make it within the sixty days. They've assured the county that ninety days should be plenty. Um, so that's why the county went with ninety days. They let the county know that it takes on average about four hours to process an application. So if you think about that, it's only two applications a day someone can actually get through uh, through their approval process and get submitted for payment. So uh, the. Washington County Commissioner is voted unanimously on an emergency ordinance to pass it for the county. And that's what we're hoping to do tonight for the city to give those folks. Who need some help to get their landlord paid. With uh, back uh, rent. Just to give an, you know, an extra thirty days so they can get done. Uh, they can stay in their in in their apartment, their house, their residence. And the landlord gets their money. So this is a kind of a win-win. Just have to wait a little bit longer to get that money. Questions? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for. First reading by title only for ordinance number fourteen sixty one dash twenty one.
Yep.
A second.
I have a motion as second for first reading by title only of ordinance number one four six zero dash twenty one. Council Hillier.
I think it's one four six one this time.
One four six, yeah, well, that one was one four six zero.
Yeah, thanks. We got all be on the same page.
Alright, I think Council Hillier said aye. Right, Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
I.
I vote I also. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number fourteen sixty one dash twenty one and ordinance relating to landlord tenant. Extending the sixty day protection period in Senate Bill two seventy eight twenty twenty one to ninety days, creating new provisions in Twelton Municipal Code Chapter nine dash twelve. And declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only for ordinance number fourteen sixty one dash twenty one.
Second.
I have a motion as second for second reading by title only of ordinance number one four six one dash twenty one. Any discussion? Council Hillier.
Aye.
Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Bye.
Council President Grimes.
I.
I vote I also. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number fourteen sixty one dash twenty one and ordinance relating to landlord tenant. Extending the sixty day protection period in Senate Bill two seventy eight twenty twenty one to ninety days. Creating new provisions in Twelton Municipal Code Chapter nine dash twelve and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number fourteen sixty one dash twenty one.
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt ordinance number one four six one dash twenty one. Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Bye.
Council President Grimes.
I.
I vote I, so therefore it was unanimous and it's uh, adopted as an emergency ordinance. Alright, thank you all. Uh, I am number two, consideration of recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Council Pratt.
Hi, um, we um, Council Brooks and Council Reyes and I interviewed people for the Twelton Planning Commission and um. One position for um, Twelton Parks Advisory Committee. And um. As usual, we had um, so many great choices that it was hard. You know, it took some real effort to pick. It's amazing the people we have in our community willing to volunteer. But for Twelton Planning Commission, we'd like to recommend Janelle Thompson. Randall Head Heltick. Zach Weimer, and for T Park, we'd like to recommend Denise Klein.
Alright, any? Discussions or questions for Council Pratt or the committee? On these appointments? Alright, do I have a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved. And I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion as second to approve the uh, recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, with pleasure.
Council Brooks.
Enthusiastic I.
Council President Grimes.
Uh, how about a grateful I and thank you all for volunteering and. Thank you for taking your positions on your new commission assignments, guys. Thanks.
Alright, I vote yes also. Thank you all to those folks who. Give their their time to our city so we can be a better, better city every year. So those are all accepted. Alright, we had no items removed from consent, so we're up to council communications. Alright, I'm seeing none. Uh, we're up to adjournment.
I just want to say the Hispanic Heritage Month, it goes all the way through. October fifteenth. I'm Hispanic. I'm from Honduras, and I just want to say um, that because I'm very proud, so. For what we have accomplished in this country and and for just um. Our language, our food, our culture, everything. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the acknowledgement. Anything else? Alright. So do I have a motion or adjournment?
So move.
Make a motion.
Got motion as second right there. We got the double whammy. Uh, all of the favor just raise your hand. Uh. Alright, unanimous. Thank you everyone for attending tonight. As we mentioned before, the very beginning of the move of the meeting. Uh, please continue to wear your mask. Please get vaccinated, keep social distance. We want COVID to go away one day, and the more we do with masks and vaccinations, the faster it'll go away. Have a safe evening. Oh, wait, I see Nancy's got her hand up.
Yes, thank you so much. I meant to mention this after we had our moment of silence for people affected by the COVID. If you want to either get vaccinated the first time, the second time, or if you are in the group that qualifies for the booster, it is very easy to go online and make an appointment to be able to go down to the pharmacy at our local Fred, Twalton, Fred Myers, and get the shot, very easy. So they're more than happy to help you if you just call them five-zero-three-six-nine-one-four-two-three-three, and that's the pharmacy at the Fred Myers in Twalton. And you can set up an exact appointment time, date, and time to just go down there and receive your shot, your first, your second, or your booster. So it's very easy. Please, everyone, try to take advantage of that. And if you know someone who is eligible for the booster, they can have their appointment as quickly as the end of this week to receive their shot. So please, help people that you know that might be in the sixty-five-plus age group that might need extra help getting down there or transportation, or anyone that's in an immunocompromised category. They also can get their boosters. So it's one to add that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, President. Counsel President Grimes, you also can get their flu shot at the same time. I heard on the radio today, they are allowing folks to get a COVID vaccine and flu shot at the same time, so make save your trips, make one trip. All right, have a good evening, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.